Have OBPS cards. So, thank you all for coming. My name is Joe Leighton, Town Administrator here in Bellingham. Wanted to put together an informational session for seniors and also residents in the town of Bellingham, talking about this coming up town meeting, which is going to be on November 19th, 7:30 at the high school. Now that our hearing is all tested. So just to sort of take us through the agenda just this morning. First, going to give an introduction to people who are going to be speaking. We're going to go over town meeting procedures, electronic voting, and then just general review of town meeting articles. For this town meeting, a lot of the articles are coming requests, coming in for capital outlay and non-capital outlay. So we'll have police, fire, conservation, town buildings, schools, and DPW speak on their requests. Then I'll go over some financial articles and non-capital outlay articles, and then we'll have some time for question and answers before we wrap up. So first, I would like to welcome up John Gillick. He's our town moderator. He can talk about town meeting procedures, and you know, this is going to be his first town meeting, so you know, it's going to be great to have a different perspective, different processes. And John, if you could come on up, just give us a second. We have to transfer mics, so hopefully that doesn't make more echoing noises like that.
But so as Joe said, thank you, Joe, for the introduction. I'm John. I'm the town moderator. Going to be my first town meeting. Very excited to get it underway. So I'll be short and sweet here, because you guys can hear my voice plenty next week. But as far as procedures go, it's going to be pretty much the same as all these other previous town meetings have gone. I'll call the meeting to order. We'll start presumably with the Pledge of Allegiance. If it's like past town meetings, I believe, you need to go through the electronic voting devices again to make sure everyone knows how to use the devices and can vote how they want on everything. After kind of all the preliminary introduction stuff's done, we're going to hit the ground running right with the articles. We'll go through each one, and after the motions are made, all the seconds are made, it's going to be opened up for discussion, as always. This is obviously encouraged. We want people to participate, address their questions and concerns. We hope that people will keep comments as brief as they can to allow the greater population to speak and kind of get through town meetings as quickly as we can. One thing I am going to ask everyone is to keep comments as respectful as possible. There's going to be a short leash for comments that are inappropriate or disrespectful, no matter who they're targeted towards, other constituents or any of the members here that are presenting at the town meeting. After discussion's over, we're going to go into the voting, where I'll make sure it's clear whether it's going to be a voice vote, if it's one of the minor procedural things, or whether the electronic devices are being used for the actual articles and stuff like that. From there, I believe we're going to have the PowerPoint up that's going to say the question again for us, and that'll have the timer. I'll make sure everyone knows when the time's begun, when time for voting is closed, and then we'll read the tally and keep going on until all the articles are complete. So I don't anticipate too much crazy stuff per procedure. It's going to be very similar to all the other town meetings, hopefully, and excited to see everyone next week.
Okay. Next, I'd like to welcome up Amy Bartoloni, and she will talk about electronic voting.
Hey, some enthusiasm. Okay. My name's Amy Bartoloni. I'm the town clerk. It's my job to record the town meeting votes and certify them, so as such, I'm going to be talking to you just for a few minutes about the electronic voting system. If you've been to a town meeting, this is going to sound very familiar to you, but it's important information to know. So we're going to be using the Easy Vote electronic system. Most of you in here have used them before. It's known as the clicker. Did you? I forgot to bring one up. Sorry. Public speaking. This is what they look like. And Hillary's got two. If you want to pass them around, you guys can take a look at them. This is what they look like. They were approved at our November 2020 annual town meeting as an accepted means of voting in Bellingham, and they are approved by the Secretary of the Commonwealth Office as a bona fide voting system. Hundreds of other communities use them and more every day because it allows for each vote to be cast as a secret ballot with easy, accurate calculations. And they are tested, I do get questions, they are tested before every town meeting. Karen, our IT person, is here. She'll take a cross-section of our clickers. We'll test them. We'll test the receivers to make sure everything is good before the meeting. And also, all the batteries. We did, fortunately, we're just able to buy a bunch more of the clickers, and we do test all the batteries before every town meeting. That said, things happen. If anything is wrong with your clicker when you're there, my wonderful town meeting tellers, some of whom are here, will be there, so you can just switch your clicker right out. So I'm going to run through a quick tutorial about how they work. When you, and I'm sorry for repeating what John said, but it's part of the process. When you check in with our town meeting tellers, they're going to give you your packet, and they're going to give you one of these. So there's a couple of them going around. Each registered voter gets one. To turn it on, when it gets to you, you're going to see there's a little paper airplane there in the front, on the top. When you turn it on, there'll be like a little antenna at the top. That's how you know it's connected. When it's time to vote, there'll be a screen up on the stage. It'll show the question. Karen will let us know that it's time to vote. You'll have 15 seconds to vote. To respond, you're going to hit the button that matches your answer. To vote yes, easy enough, 1A. And if you click it now, you're welcome to click any of the buttons. Now it's going to say A. Just to vote no, you're going to click 2B, red, and that's going to say B. You are able to change your mind until the time runs out, so please be mindful of the time, and we'll remind you. The last vote that you take before the time is up will be the one that sticks. And like I said, if for any reason your clicker doesn't work, you're going to see any of the time maybe tellers switch it on for you. And lastly, we do, if you haven't been to a town meeting before, we do do a couple of fun test questions, make sure everything's working correctly with the clickers, with us, before the vote. So if I have 30 seconds, I'm going to do a little, a little quick test. I was thinking, not to give anything away, one of our questions will be, do you like coffee? So if you see it and you like coffee, press green. If you don't, you're red. So in 15 seconds, we will have the results for that. Were a big vote, in 15 seconds, we'd have the results of that. Contrast that to, I'm going to ask you now, as a group, do you like coffee? Raise your hands, yes. So otherwise, we would have to have a teller coming through and count all of you, and I won't do that right now. But much easier, very reliable. If you have any questions about it, please feel free to see me. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. So next, I'm just going to do a general overview of the articles, and then we'll get into things in a little bit more detail. So coming up first, and a lot of these are typical articles that you'll see every town meeting or every fall town meeting. So for example, amending FY26 operating expenses, Article, Article 2. Amending trash enterprise, Article 3. Amending water enterprise for sewer enterprises, Article 5. Amending stormwater enterprise. Then we get into our capital and non-capital outlay articles, which are 6 and 7. Article 8, we're going to be amending a previous town meeting approval for funding for design services for the Hartford Ave PFAS treatment plant. Then we're going to, coming in, Article 9, transfer money to the group health insurance trust fund. Article 10, capital investment trust fund. Article 11, transfer to compensated absences fund. 12, stabilization fund. And 13, unpaid bills. So first, just a comment about capital and non-capital outlays. So basically, when the town is reviewing requests, say, for new ambulance, or fire truck, or a vacuum cleaner, things that are $50,000 and over are considered a capital outlay request, and things that are under 50 are a non-capital, meaning that we have a capital budget committee that reviews requests and asks questions, and they're primarily focused on the capital, the items that are over $50,000. For this town meeting, and there are many other funding requests where we're getting money from, but for this town meeting, we have primarily two sources. One are enterprise funds, and the other is from free cash. Enterprise funds are really revenue that is, that comes through and supports operating capital expenses, say, for water or sewer. Free cash is when the town departments either don't spend their full budget, or you get more revenue in than what you estimated. That surplus is considered free cash, and that is available for capital requests by town meeting. So we have a number of capital requests that are coming in, and we're going to go through those sort of in the following order, police, fire, conservation, town buildings, schools, department, public works. And what I would ask is, starting with police, once police is done, then to ask that fire come up, then conservation sort of following that, that order. So first, have Lieutenant Steve Madagel come in, come up to talk about police requests.
Morning, everybody. My name's Steve Madagel, Lieutenant here at the Police Department. I'm here for the Chief this morning to talk about our capital requests for this year. We are asking for the amount of $288,000 for the purchase of 36 Motorola APX portable radios. So that's the radio that the officers carry on their person at all times. So those radios, they're going to replace our current fleet of single-band radios, which are five years past their, end of their operational and support life. This replacement is critical to ensure officer safety, operational efficiency, and interoperability with our neighboring jurisdictions in both Massachusetts and Rhode Island. Currently, we have no ability to speak to one socket we border and work with frequently on our current radios. So this will correct that issue that we've had for a long time. So the existing radios, they're going to be 14 years old. They've been here longer than I've been a police officer here. So when we replace those, we're looking to get the, like I said, the Motorola APX multiband radios. Those will now come with a full warranty. Maybe we'll have them serviced and repaired as needed. So the current software stopped working for these radios in 2019, so there's no longer been support for updates. The, again, like I said, they're, the current radios are, radios are single-band. We're looking to upgrade to the multiband radios. That will give us towns like Hope Dale we can't speak to now, Mennebun we can't speak to now, those will open up that option for us. And the, the Fire Department actually upgraded to these same portable radios last year, so that'll give us the same interoperability as well. Okay? I think that's it.
All right. Good morning. Deputy Chief Provost here on behalf of the Fire Department. So we are asking for a new cascade system, priced at $20,000, $70,000, excuse me. And what this does, it allows us basically to refill our STVA balls. If we work in any incident that requires us to use supplied air through the air packs, whether it be a structural fire, hazmat situation, car fire, we need a way to bring those then back to the station to refill them. The current system that we have right now was installed in 2012. It is no longer manufactured or supported, which means we can't do any upgraded maintenance, or we cannot buy parts. So essentially, without upgrading, we really don't know how long our life expectancy is with our current system. You know, we could run into a situation today where we have a structural fire, again, an incident where we need to go on supply breathing air, if we may not be able to fill our balls, which means that apparatus cannot get put back in service. And again, much like on the police side, it really comes down to the safety of our members. If we don't have the ability to refill our balls, you know, our members can't go inside to building fires, and it really reduces the amount of work that we can do. So again, essentially critical for safety. Other than that, that's our only request this year for the cabinet.
Hi, Hannah. I'm the Bellingham Conservation Agent. We are requesting an amount of $26,285 for the Sonata 1 treatment at Silver Lake. This is a treatment that we do on about 25 acres of Silver Lake every three to five years. We do have a yearly treatment that we would typically do in those off-years that's different herbicide, but this is a systemic one, so this should last a little bit longer, and that's typically for the treatment of water milfoirio and plantanord, both of which are non-native species that are kind of nuisance vegetation that makes recreation opportunities and, you know, all that enjoyment that people have at Silver Lake. A lot less operationable and not as good for the aquatic ecosystem down there, so this is something that we typically has us do every three to five years based on our surveys and information. And that's about it.
Good morning. I'm Tim Icardi. I am the Building Inspector, and I also do maintenance on several town buildings. Most of you probably recognize me. So I'm here today for some maintenance on the town hall. You've probably noticed over the past year, we've, we painted the whole town hall out front. We did some maintenance on it. We also painted the municipal center. I don't know if it was painted prior to that. I think it's the first repaint, but you've probably noticed how good it looks down there now. We've also done a bunch of other projects, but I'm here today for the town hall. So the town hall is about 22 years old now, and you all know the coupler on the top of the building that needs some attention, so that's, that's one of the items that we're requesting here for $16,000. That's the repair and bucketing it up. It's had some leaks over the years, and we've kind of been sticking our fingers in the, in the leaks and trying to hold it out, but it's time to fix it. So that's one of the items. The roof is aging. The roof's been blown apart. It takes a tremendous wind load down there, you know, in the center, and it blows it apart. You can see all different colors are patched in on the roof. It's time to change it to keep the, maintain the roof quality. So that's the other item. That's the big one, the $49,000, it's a pretty big roof. Over here at the Senior Center, we're going for some siding repair. There's really been no maintenance on this building, you know, that I can tell. The siding itself is a composite siding, it's downed up. So we went for this amount here just to try to repair some of the lower stuff. It's falling apart, and we'd like to replace some of the corner boards and get it looking good. So that's the start of it. We're going to come back next year if you can go for some more to get it buffed up and look and keep them looking good. So that's that item there. And also, the library's going for a carpet machine that they borrow, I think they borrowed from Doug at the schools to do their carpets. So she's going to purchase a machine, and some of the other town builders can borrow it and, you know, take care of their carpets as well, as well. So that's basically it. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but thank you very much.
So I'm Doug Houston, trying to do maintenance for the Bellingham other schools. Everybody hear me all right?
Yeah. People around, I'm the superintendent of schools. We have four items for capital to speak.
Yeah. Four items. The first would be Starbrook Elementary School in, actually, all the schools. We're having a lot of HVAC issues this year. We turn the heat on, once we turn the heat on, we find a lot of mechanical problems. So we have boiler work, we have unit vent work, we have pump work, we have all kinds of different work that we have to do. And if our budget's not supporting it at the moment, so we're asking for additional funds to help support that. We're looking for a district feasibility study. So we're looking to get the study of all the schools, the buildings, and the facilities that run the schools to see what we may need to do in the future to try and get that five-year plan to make sure that we're, we're ready to maintain and possibly replace certain items and, you know, make some schools in the future. We're looking for a trailer also. You don't know, we take care of Blackstone Street properties at the moment. Next year, we're going to be taking care of Patriot Elementary and also Starbrook Elementary, the grounds around it. So we're going to need a trailer to, to get our equipment from one site to another. And the last one would be flooring at the Patriot Elementary School. So if you ever walk into the Patriot Elementary School, it's, it's kind of a brick or tile flooring that's kind of a slip hazard. We're getting a lot of cracking and settling in that floor, and we need to replace the floor. We're going to replace it with a kinetic flooring that we have currently at the high school. If you walk into the high school, you can, you can see that floor down there. Any questions?
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Jesse Riedel, Belling MDPW. We've got a handful of requests up here today. We'll start with our first. It's for a generator backup supply at 215 Depot Street in Bellingham. For those of you that don't know, our new DPW headquarters is located at 215 Depot Street. It's our administrative building. Most of our operations do operate out of this facility, and we are looking to provide backup power to the site in the event of a power outage. We would sustain operations and continue the level of service that Bellingham expects. And this is anticipated to be funded, funded through several various methods, both enterprise funding and general funding. So up, up on the screen here, we've put together just a brief overview of some of the services that you might associate DPW with between snow plowing and salting operations, water system repairs, sewer system repairs, as well as stormwater system operations. And some of the other items that do pass through this facility also include the heating for it, but also our water status system also passes through it. So when it comes to our, our wells, our tanks, our treatment facilities, all of that information passes through one central hub, which is the DPW building on 215 Depot Street. So just highlights the importance of why uninterrupted power is critical for this facility. Our next request is for our sewer enterprise. This is a request for sewer grinders at our North Main Sewer Pumping Station. Last town meeting, last fall town meeting, we had a request for a similar site on Mechanic Treats, actually off of Crystal Way. Same vintage sewer station, similar request to replace grinders. And essentially, we're, we're looking to get these replaced in advance of any sort of failure, which could cause a sewer overflow. Obviously, it'll be good to keep ahead of these maintenance items. The last thing that we want in town is any sort of sewer overflow effect situation. So our request for this year is to replace the, the grinders to keep operations as smooth as possible. Our next request is for continued compliance at our recycling center. This would fund the design for improvements to the landfill cap. As it stands, we have a report that was done by our regulatory agency at MassDEP that details the deficiency on the backside of the landfill. I've got an overview of where the landfill is, and you can kind of see the solar array here and whatnot, but essentially, there's a portion in the back where water isn't traveling, where it's intended to travel, and it's eroded the cap itself. So we're looking to reestablish that through the design phase for the potential for future funding for construction. Up next is a request through our Water Enterprise Fund. This is for an access road for Bellingham's potential new well source, which would be called Well 10. This is just off of High Street, for those of you that are familiar with the area. We do have another well on the opposite side of High Street, which is our well 12 site. This request is for the access road to, to get equipment back to the viable source or the, the potential source, to do pump drawdown tests to see if the quality, if the volume can sustain for what we're looking for here. So this is really the next step to get the equipment back and continue the exploration for source for Bellingham. Next up, we have a request for a vegetation management plan. As most of you have probably seen throughout town, the DPW will routinely send out our brush cutter. We've got a couple of these machines. This is a request for a plan for a town-wide approach to how we address vegetation and overgrowth. It would be a combination of things between continued operations with our brush cutters, our roadside mowers, but also if, if it's called for, you know, potential for herbicide applications and things of that nature. So this would really clearly define location where the appropriate type of treatment would be used, public notification, and all the proper channels are utilized for this type of application. Next up, we have a request for repairs at our playgrounds throughout town. We did successfully have an inspection run this season for all the playgrounds throughout Bellingham, and in that inspection report detailed the number of deficiencies. So we just have an operating budget that we're able to take care of some of the smaller items, you know, things that might be anticipated, just routine maintenance, but we've also got some larger ticket items that would require additional monies outside of what we would normally anticipate. So the request is to take care of more of the issues, the larger issues throughout the playgrounds in Bellingham. Thank you.
Okay. First, just want to thank all of the departments for coming up and speaking about their articles. And after, there will be an opportunity for, for questions, and people will stick around also if you wanted to just ask a little bit more. So right now, I'm just going to get into the, the rest of the warrant. That includes the financial and non-capital articles. So, and some of these, and I apologize upfront, some of these are rather lengthy, but then at least the request for town meeting is going to be pretty simple. So first of all, Article 1, and for anyone that is going to be attending town meeting, or we have copies here for you to take after. The Finance Committee reviews all of the article requests that are submitted by departments and produces a report and recommendation. So all these articles are located within that report and recommendation. So first is Article 1, amend annual town meeting operating expenses for FY26. When the warrant was put together, we didn't know if we need to make adjustments. For this town meeting, it was determined we actually don't need to make any adjustments, so we're going to be looking to pass over this, this article. Article 2, you know, would do the same for trash enterprise. And as we got closer to town meeting, we determined that there were no, there was no need at this fall town meeting for any transfers, so we're going to be looking to pass over Article 2. Article 3, looking at amending FY26 water enterprise, sort of the same thing, sort of maybe noticing a trend here. We don't have any changes right now, so we'll be passing over Article 3. And Article 4, sewer enterprise, looking at amending that. However, when we got closer to production of the Finance Committee report, there were no changes that were needed, so would be going ahead and recommending passing over Article 4. And similarly, for FY26 amendments to the stormwater FY26 budget, we didn't identify that there was any amendments that were needed, so we're going to be recommending passing over Article 5. Coming forward, skipping over Articles 6 and 7, which departments just presented their articles. Article 8, back at the May 24th, 2023 town meeting, $2.1 million was appropriated for the design of a new PFAS treatment plant. That work has been done, and we're actually going to be going out to bid and starting construction early 2026, and we didn't use all of the, the $2.1 million. There's approximately $662,000 left. What we'd like is town meeting's approval to allow for us to use those funds which are already approved and actually bonded to be able to use for construction. That will just go towards the balance and ultimately, you know, also save us time from the prior, what was it, last year in the fall, the construction funds, where it was at 3.2 million, or 3.4?
36.5 was authorized for construction.
3.6 million for construction?
30, 36.
30, I'm sorry. Yeah. 36 million was approved for construction. So this would just go towards that amount and be able to be used upfront to get this project going. Article 9 is an annual article that we sometimes transfer money to the health, group health insurance fund in the fall and spring. So for this town meeting, we're going to be recommending transferring $1 million. And for this, as well as the next article, I'd like to welcome Caroline McCrory to speak about those.
Good morning. My name's Caroline McCrory, I'm the Director of Human Resources and the Assistant Town Administrator for the town of Bellingham. And I'm here to speak to Article 9 entitled, "Transfer to Group Health Insurance Trust Fund." Due to the higher-than-expected expenses that the town experienced during fiscal '25, the town administrator and chief financial officer are recommending to transfer $1 million into the group health insurance trust million into the Group Health Insurance Trust Fund. Staff has reviewed the transfer as being necessary to build up the trust fund balance due to higher-than-expected expenditures. Currently, we've been reviewing, um, the first four months of the year, we don't have enough data to determine trends for usage in totality for fiscal '26. Looking ahead to fiscal '27, the Select Board, collective bargaining units, and retirees agree to plan design changes that are expected to save the town in excess of $280,000 in fiscal '27. Uh, just a few notes on this article, um, the trust fund balance at the close of June 30th, 2025 was $1,025. The annual town meeting, um, through warrant article, approved a transfer of $800,000. Absent that $800,000, we would have been left with a fund balance of slightly over $200,000. It's not a comfortable level, um, for us to, um, work with, and this appropriation of $1 million, in addition to the town's annual operating budget appropriation, will at least satisfy and allow us to continue to, um, expend funds, uh, in a, in a financial and fiscal manner that we feel, that we deem appropriate. Article 11, Transfer to Compensated Absences Fund. Article 11 seeks to approve the transfer in sum of money of $75,000 for free cash to Compensated Absences Fund. This fund covers contractual obligations associated with paying for accrued benefits, which are paid out upon separation of an employee from the Town of Bellingham or specified in contracts with sick-time buyout provisions. We have a number of collective bargaining agreements in place that allow for the payout of sick time upon death, retirement, resignation. There are stipulations in each of these agreements with dollar amounts and dates for the amount that would be paid out to an employee that was eligible. The $75,000 will go into the trust fund to be added to the balance that we have on account, which will allow us to suitably and responsibly pay out these payments to these employees in these bargaining units.
Uh, thanks, Caroline. Uh, so just gonna go back quickly to Article 10, uh, which was transfer of funds to the Capital Investment Trust Fund, um, at this time. Uh, we are, uh, not proposing any recommend, any transfers to this fund, so we're recommending passing over that article. Uh, Article 12, Transfer to Stabilization Fund. Uh, right now, we have adequate, um, uh, funds in our stabilization funds, uh, the state has a recommendation as far as the, uh, the amount of money that town should have as a percentage of their operating budget, we currently meet that, that standard, and so for this town meeting, we're not recommending transfer of any funds, so we'd be passing over this article. And lastly, Article 13 is, uh, for any unpaid bills. Uh, very often, when you close out a fiscal year, uh, there are sometimes some bills that comes in, comes in late, um, and it's, uh, usually a placeholder that sometimes we don't know right up until town meeting. However, we're now less than a week out, we don't have any unpaid bills that have come to our attention, so we're gonna be recommending passing over this, this article as well. Uh, so next, just would like to just open it up in case anyone had any questions. Yes?
I'm curious, how much money do we have that they forget? You seem like anything's being paid for free cash for most of it. How much do we have?
So, uh, free cash was certified at $3.7 million. Uh, right now, uh, the articles that we are, uh, proposing for using free cash, um, sorry, just scrolling back to, uh, one of the slides. Uh, so, uh, we're proposing using for articles that are capital outlay under 50K, about $217,000, and then for over 50K, um, while the total there is 1.1 million, uh, there is approximately, um, uh, $400,000 of that, that is coming from retained earnings, so uh, looking at a little over 800,000. So you're talking about, about 1 million is coming from free cash, then you have the additional million that would be going in for the, uh, Health Insurance Trust Fund. Uh, so we're sort of still gonna be having free cash, uh, that's un, uh, designated for, uh, for this town meeting of about 1.8. That will give us flexibility going into annual town meeting. Uh, for Bellingham, as well as many towns, free cash is what towns use for capital, uh, improvements, capital purchases. Um, so this will give us a chance to sort of see how the year goes, and then come back, uh, we expect many of the departments to come back with additional requests, because the requests that we received this, for this town meeting, there are some that we pulled back either because we wanted additional information to refine the, the numbers, or we wanted to see how, uh, this year went, to then make a determination whether or not we could accommodate future requests. Yes?
What percentage of free cash is mandated by the state against the budget?
So there's, uh, as far as the amount that is recommended from the Department of, of Local Services, um, it, it varies because, um, uh, there are many different ways that towns, uh, receive revenue. So for example, Water Sewer and for Bellingham, Stormwater also receives revenue coming in from, you know, everyone's water or sewer bills, um, and their retained earnings, uh, are in some ways considered, you know, money that's available, sort of like free cash, but that goes towards funding improvements, uh, and operations within their departments. Um, uh, recommendations from El, uh, Department of, uh, Local Services estimates that town should have about, um, 2% to, um, 5% generate free cash, meaning that they're sort of planning for that free cash, um, to make sure that they can, uh, in times where the economy starts to go down a little bit, there's a little bit of a buffer, uh, and to make sure that, you know, we can continue to pay our bills. So if anyone does have any questions, or if people are watching, uh, this video on the town's website, uh, YouTube channel, or social media, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out, email is on the screen, jayway@bellinghamma.org, or you can also call the, the office. Um, and, you know, hope to see everyone there on November 19th, 7:30 at Bellingham High School, um, and, uh, thank you very much, and thank you to all the departments, uh, for participating and presenting their requests.